Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, May 3rd, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. So for the invocation, I just wanted to say that in a time of a lot of divisiveness and struggle, there's been amazing moments when people come together. So I encourage everyone to treat one another with respect and kindness regardless of our differences and that we look for areas of similarities from which we can build our partnerships with one another. For flag salute, Chair, or Chair, Board Member Razadi will be leading us in the flag salute.
Thank you. Will you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty, justice, and so on.
Thank you, Board Member Razadi.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Board Member Gambola.
Present.
Board Member Hadian.
Present.
Board Member Razadi.
I am here.
Chair Liu.
Yes, I'm here.
Board Member Otakunian. Let the record show, Board Member Otakunian is absent.
Thank you. So in order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business, sorry, we have a little bit of craziness with my slides. We will be holding a online meeting, as you see, a virtual meeting. And, sorry, give me one moment. Make sure that I say everything correctly. So the city facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. So the city will be providing alternatives to the in-person attendance reviewing and participating in the planning board meetings. So in lieu of the in-person attendance, as I've mentioned, members of the public may participate online and during the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. So do we have any announcements from city staff?
There are no announcements, ma'am.
Thank you. So there are no hearings, public hearings tonight, tonight's agenda, so we'll move forward to the next item, which is a report from city staff. If you will, whoever is going to be presenting, if they could go ahead and introduce yourself and summarize their report for us.
Hi, good evening, Chair Liu and members of the board. My name is Lisa Frank, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. Can everybody hear me okay? Just want to make sure.
Not too good.
Yes. Okay, last time I had some trouble with my audio, so if you have any trouble, let me know. But we do have a pre-recorded presentation for you, for the report, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and get that started. Just one moment, please.
Good evening, Chair Liu. Members of the board, my name is Lisa Frank, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight's report is regarding state-required updates to the Burbank 2035 General Plan, including the housing element and safety element, and incorporation of environmental justice goals and policies throughout the general plan. For tonight's presentation, I'm also joined by other staff in the Planning Division, Housing Division, as well as the consultant team, KWA Associates and RINCON Consultants. Burbank 2035, the city's general plan, is a state-required policy document made up of different elements that provide guidance in shaping the future of physical growth and development of the city. Burbank 2035 includes the following elements: housing, land use, mobility, safety, noise, air quality and climate change, open space and conservation, and plan realization. Every eight years, the housing element of the general plan must be updated and reviewed by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. The city's existing housing element was adopted in 2014 and covered the planning period from 2014 through 2021. Therefore, the housing element is due for the eight-year update, which will cover the planning period from October of 2021 through 2029. In addition, a number of state laws taking effect in recent years trigger other general plan updates upon revision to any element of the general plan, which in this case is the housing element. This includes required revisions to the safety element and revisions throughout the general plan to incorporate goals and policies regarding environmental justice as defined in state law. Additional background information on the general plan and housing element was provided during the January 25th, 2021 status update to the planning board. As a follow-up to that meeting, tonight's report includes draft versions of the housing element, as well as a memo that outlines proposed new policies to address the safety element and environmental justice requirements. City staff is seeking input on these draft documents. The board is not taking any action tonight on whether to adopt the proposed changes for the housing element, safety element, or environmental justice policies, but will have the opportunity to do so when staff comes back for final adoption hearings, which I will touch on in the next slide. So why is it important to have a compliant housing element? Maintaining a state-compliant housing element is very important for numerous reasons. The state attorney now has the explicit authority under AB 72 to take legal action against jurisdictions that have a non-compliant housing element, which is what happened to the city of Huntington Beach. For housing elements that are state-compliant, there is protection from lawsuit as there is a presumption of legal validity in the courts. If the court doesn't validate the element, it has the authority to halt all discretionary actions in a city, including issuance of building permits, and has the authority to impose fines of up to $100,000 per month until the element is brought into compliance. A compliant housing element allows a jurisdiction to maintain discretionary review over affordable housing projects where applicable, and allows access to a variety of state housing funds, such as the SB 2 and LEAP grant funds recently awarded to the city. And finally, a housing element that is out of compliance due to a failure to demonstrate adequate sites to address its regional housing needs assessment allocation, or RENA, is required to carry over the unaccommodated RENA into the next planning period. This slide provides more information on the overall schedule and where we are in the process. The schedule is based on the state-required deadline of October 15th, 2021. The process began in July 2020 with a city council study session, and the yellow line and arrow indicate roughly where we are now with preparation of the public review draft housing element. In terms of the schedule and process, following this meeting, staff will provide the documents inclusive of input from the board and the public for city council review. Immediately thereafter, we would submit a draft housing element to HCD. HCD conducts their review of the draft and provides their comments within 60 days. The purpose of HCD's draft review is to identify if any part of the element does not comply with the numerous applicable requirements and gives the city a chance to address any such issues before adopting and submitting the final element. It is anticipated that public hearings for the project would go before the planning board and city council during the early fall of 2021 in order to meet the housing element adoption deadline. And in terms of the schedule and process, this slide provides more information on the community outreach efforts that have taken place so far. A project webpage was created to serve as the information hub for the update process. That webpage is www.burbankhousingelement.com. Two study sessions took place, one with city council in July 2020 and one with the planning board in January, as previously mentioned. We held stakeholder meetings in August 2020 with several local service providers and nonprofits, as well as developers and representatives from the local business community. Additionally, there were online community workshops, one in October and one in late February. Translation services in Armenian and Spanish were available for the workshops. These workshops were streamed live on the city's YouTube channel and local cable channel, and video recordings were posted to the project webpage and on YouTube, making the workshop content accessible to people who are not able to attend the workshops live. Most recently in March, we also held a California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, scoping meeting as part of the required environmental review for this project. A community survey was available online during September through December with options in English, Spanish, and Armenian. We received 226 responses, which were included as part of the appendix to the housing element in Exhibit B. For each of these efforts, a number of strategies were used to help spread the word. The city's Public Information Office assisted with announcements on the main city webpage, e-notify email blasts, press release, and social media posts. Staff also published ads in the LA Times, created flyers, and prepared announcements at city council, senior board, and landlord-tenant commission. Staff from the Burbank Housing Corporation helped to notify VHC residents. Additionally, staff and the consultant maintained an email interest list that started with the stakeholder group contacts and grew throughout the process for anyone that requested to receive updates on the project. Staff will continue to make efforts to announce updates and spread the word as the draft and final documents are prepared. Through housing elements, state law requires that local governments adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. The draft housing element that was provided in Exhibit A with appendices in Exhibit B addresses many different aspects of housing in the city in order to show how the city is planning to make efforts to that overall objective required by state law. The different components of the document are therefore based on the housing element's statutory requirements, as well as various guidance information from HCD. Additionally, the starting point in updating the housing element is to use the existing element and maintain those aspects of the document that are still applicable and appropriate to include. In other words, it is not starting from scratch. Some of the main components of the housing element include the housing needs assessment, housing goals and policies, and housing programs. The housing needs assessment provides various details on the city's population and housing stock, including information on household types, race and ethnicity, age, income, housing costs, and special needs households. The needs assessment is intended to outline the most recently available demographic trends and patterns to help create relevant goals, policies, and programs aimed at meeting those needs. One example of this would be documenting the degree to which senior households are experiencing housing overpayment or excessive spending on rent or mortgage relative to income. The introduction portion of the draft housing element included a listing of proposed goals and policies. The goals are generally high-level statements that express a desired outcome, while the associated policies are meant to provide guidance in pursuing those goals. The last portion of the draft housing element includes what's known as the Housing Plan, which is a series of programs to implement the stated goals and policies. Per state law, the programs must be actionable and include timeframes for implementation, as well as clear objectives. The next section of the presentation will focus on the proposed housing programs. As you'll see identified on the slides that follow, some of these programs are existing ongoing efforts. Others are modified from previous programs to comply with state requirements, and some are new altogether. The first set of programs are connected to Goal 1, Existing Housing in Neighborhoods. Goal 1 states that Burbank seeks to enhance the quality of existing housing in neighborhoods. Programs that would support this goal include neighborhood revitalization slash community building efforts, which is part of the existing housing element. A community preservation program that includes code enforcement, continuing to provide outreach and education to implement state laws that provide tenant protection regulations for existing residents, and administering federal housing choice vouchers that provide rental assistance subsidies to extremely low and very low-income households, which is also part of the existing housing element programs. A new aspect of the Neighborhood Revitalization and Community Building Program is what's called committed assistance, where the city would commit financial assistance to help acquire, rehabilitate, and purchase affordability covenants on 10 market rate rental units within the first three years of the housing element. By identifying this in the housing element programs, the city can credit these units to the city's Regional Housing Needs Assessment Allocation, or RENA, which otherwise only applies to net new housing units. The second set of programs are connected to Goal 2, which states that Burbank seeks to provide housing sites that accommodate a range of housing types to meet the diverse needs of existing and future residents. The primary program that would support this goal is the Identification of Housing Opportunity Sites. In 2019, the city council established a housing goal to build 12,000 new dwelling units through 2035, particularly within the downtown area Airport District or Golden State and parts of the Media District. This housing goal is intended to facilitate responsible development that results in new housing for all economic segments, including much-needed workforce housing. In order to achieve this goal, the city is undertaking specific plan updates to provide the necessary zoning, objective development standards, and processing procedures to facilitate the production of housing. Additionally, the housing element includes a required housing sites inventory, which is discussed in the Housing Resources section of the document, as well as Appendix D included as part of Exhibit B to the staff report. The identification of suitable sites for housing within the eight-year planning period is critical to achieving a state-compliant housing element. The sites must be sufficient to accommodate enough housing units that meet the city's Regional Housing Needs Assessment Allocation, or RENA, which is mandated by state housing law as part of the periodic housing element update process. The RENA quantifies the need for housing at all affordability levels that each city and county in the state must zone for in a planning period, as outlined in the January 2021 presentation, as well as noted in the staff report and the draft document. Burbank's RENA allocation for 2021 through 2029 is 8,772 housing units, made up of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income units as shown in the graphic on this slide. In addition to those units, the sites inventory includes enough sites to accommodate housing units in an amount that is above and beyond the RENA, known as the buffer. The buffer is important for addressing a requirement called no-net loss, which requires jurisdictions to ensure that their housing element sites inventory continues to have capacity to accommodate the RENA by income group throughout the planning period. The proposed Housing Opportunity Sites program also includes what is known as a rezone program, and we'll expand on the sites inventory and rezone program a bit more in the next couple slides. In addition, in addition to the Housing Opportunity Sites, as part of Goal 2, there is a proposed program to promote affordable accessory dwelling units pursuant to Assembly Bill 671, which requires housing elements to include plans to incentivize and encourage affordable ADU rentals. As proposed, this would include creation of pre-approved ADU plans that can streamline the review process and reduce upfront costs to the property owner, as well as other activities, including approval of ADUs smaller than 500 square feet in a shorter turnaround time than the 60 days required by state law. In addition, the city is reducing ADU processing fees from $1,998 to $1,489, with further cost reductions for ADUs that incorporate accessibility features. Lastly, another program includes considering options to pursue public-private partnerships that can include sale and/or leasing of appropriate city-owned properties on a long-term basis to housing developers in exchange for a long-term commitment to maintain all or a portion of the units as affordable housing. As part of the Downtown Transit-Oriented Development, or TOD, specific plan update, the city is evaluating an expansion of the Civic Center and the potential introduction of housing as part of a larger mixed-use development on city-owned parcels. City Council goal-setting on the issue of affordable housing over the last several years resulted in the 2017 Affordable Housing Analysis and Strategy and Affordable Housing Action Plan, followed in 2019 with the council setting a goal to facilitate the building of 12,000 additional homes over the 2035 general plan planning period. This goal-setting is related to the city's affordable housing puzzle, represented in the image shown on the right of the slide, which has been driven in part by the city's jobs-to-housing imbalance and high demand for housing. Part of the affordable housing puzzle includes long-range planning efforts such as updating specific plans, zoning code amendments, and affordable housing development incentives. The approach taken in developing the sites inventory is related to the affordable housing strategy by identifying opportunity sites primarily within the downtown and Golden State districts, aligning with the specific plan updates that are currently underway and will be finalized during the housing element cycle. The inventory also identifies projects that are already in the development pipeline and that would be built during the planning period. Additionally, the sites inventory accounts for the estimated ADU production or accessory dwelling unit production expected to occur over the eight years. And lastly, although a smaller component of the sites inventory, alternative site options refers to the committed assistance program noted as part of Goal 1 programs, where 10 existing market rate units are identified to be acquired, rehabilitated, and converted to long-term affordable housing so that the city can receive credit on the RENA progress when this occurs. The housing element sites inventory is proposed, therefore serves to meet the city's assigned RENA plus buffer under state law, and further aligns with city council direction and the city's general plan. This slide shows Table 1-38 from the draft housing element and provides a summary of potential housing units to meet the city's RENA plus the buffer. The full listing of sites associated with this table are included in Appendix D of the element. The area shaded blue within the table is a tally of housing units that come from a combination of 1, already entitled projects, for example, the La Terra project at 777 Front Street; 2, projects pending entitlement, in other words, any project already submitted or nearing submission that has not yet been approved; 3, opportunity sites within the specific plan areas where the current zoning will remain in place; 4, an estimate of accessory dwelling unit or ADU production over the planning period; and 5, the 10 units of committed assistance for acquisition and rehab and conversion to very low-income units. The total sites capacity from these sources is 7,472 units, reflecting a 1,300-unit shortfall below the city's RENA. The area shaded in red represents what are called rezone sites. These are sites identified within the Golden State District and downtown identified for upzoning to address the RENA shortfall and provide a buffer of approximately 1,200 units. As a note, pursuant to state statutes, development on sites identified for rezoning to address the city's lower-income RENA must be allowed by right if an eventual project includes 20% of more or more of the units for low or very low-income households. This table includes columns for income distribution, and for each category, you'll see that there is a number assigned to very low, low, moderate, or above moderate. This is because the city must show how we can meet the assigned RENA for each affordability level. To distribute potential housing units by affordability level, staff and the consultant use the state's guidance that establishes a default density of 30 dwelling units per acre for a site to be considered suitable for the production of very low and low-income units, as well as taking into consideration the city's inclusionary housing requirement of 15% to further estimate the potential affordability distribution of projects that would get developed on these sites. The third set of programs are connected to Goal 3. Goal 3 states that Burbank will continue to facilitate the development of housing affordable to all economic segments of the community. Programs that support this goal include providing affordable housing development assistance, funding, and resources permitted, continuing to implement and eventually update the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, continuing to implement the state's Affordable Housing Density Bonus Incentive Program, pursuing efforts to facilitate affordable homeownership opportunities, and engaging major employers in the city to discuss and determine feasibility of establishing employer-assisted housing programs. Examples of this could include down payment grants or loans that are forgiven over a period of employment, homeownership counseling and education, rental subsidies and direct investment in the construction of housing or providing of land. Other programs include establishing an affordable housing commercial linkage fee where fees can be assessed on new non-residential development. Commercial linkage fees serve as a means to help meet the demand for affordable housing created by new commercial growth, and any such fee must be established through an impact fee nexus study. An affordable housing commercial development impact fee was recently implemented in the city of Glendale, for example. Other programs include continuing to implement the city's green building requirements, including for affordable housing units, as well as implementing state-required regulations for transitional and supportive housing to be treated as residential use in all zones where residential uses are already permitted. As noted when this item went before the board on April 12th, 2021 recently, the Transitional and Supportive Housing Program is an existing program that was supposed to be implemented during the last cycle and is included in the updated element to comply with state law. It is anticipated that this item will go to city council in June or July, and input received from the planning board will be provided to the city council. The fourth set of programs are connected to Goal 4. Goal 4 states that Burbank will focus on removing governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing. Programs that support this goal include establishing objective development standards that make it clear what is required for a housing development project to help streamline the review process. Additionally, updating the city's multifamily development standards would help facilitate small and midsize multifamily housing projects. Lastly, the city's inclusionary housing program and density bonus program allow for development fee waivers for affordable housing in limited circumstances, and this incentive could be expanded upon. This program also notes that pending legislation from the state could preclude affordable housing impact fees from being imposed on housing developments, affordable units, so staff would keep tabs on that as it relates to this program. The fifth set of programs are connected to Goal 5. Goal 5 states that Burbank will promote nondiscrimination and fair and equal housing opportunities for all persons. Programs that support this goal include affirmatively furthering for housing, including city efforts to actively assist and educate the public about fair housing issues and provide access to housing opportunities for all residents, continuation of an existing housing program to provide landlord-tenant services through the Burbank Housing Authority and Landlord Tenant Commission, as well as most recently through the city's fair housing service provider called the Housing Rights Center. Additionally, implementation of the city's 2018 homelessness plan is ongoing. It includes, for example, a storage facility for homeless persons, street outreach program, hiring of a homeless services liaison, partnerships with Family Service Agency of Burbank, Providence St. Joseph Medical Center, and other providers for counseling services, and tenant-based rental assistance for families at risk of homelessness, among other actions. The last program included for Goal 5 is Housing for Persons with Disabilities, which would seek to expand the range of housing options available and accessible to persons with disabilities, for example, by continuing to support nonprofit organizations that specialize in the construction and rehabilitation of housing targeted for persons with disabilities, and as previously referenced, establishing a program to reduce building permit and planning fees for up to 50% for accessible ADUs, among other efforts. Moving on from programs, another new component of the housing element law is the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing, or AFFH, analysis. The AFFH was included in Appendix B to Exhibit B of the staff report. With the passage of Assembly Bill 686 in 2018, all of California's public agencies have an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. Affirmatively furthering fair housing under state law means, quote, "taking meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities." Under the AFFH, all public agencies in the state must administer programs and activities relating to housing and community development in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing, and must also take no actions that are inconsistent with this obligation. The AFFH analysis for the housing element references information that was included in the city's Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, or AI, that was recently completed for the 2020 through 2025 years, and that identified potential impediments to fair housing that are specific to Burbank. Additionally, based on economic, environmental, and educational criteria established by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, or TCAC, and HCD, the majority of Burbank's census tracts are ident- the majority of Burbank Census Traxx are identified as areas of highest and high resources. Only two of the city's twenty-four census tracts are identified as moderate resource. These two census tracts are located in the southeast portion of the city along the IFI Freeway and are shown in the lighter green turquoise color with an orange star. The AFFH includes identifying how the city can expand investment and opportunity within the city's relatively lower resource areas. A majority of these two census tracts falls within the Burbank Center Plan, which was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven as an economic revitalization plan and is currently being updated and integrated within the downtown TOD-specific plan. It is expected that these areas will benefit from investments associated with implementation of the specific plan update. Additionally, based on approved and pending housing projects and opportunity sites identified in the Burbank Downtown TOD and Golden State specific plan areas, the higher-density housing sites identified in the Housing Element Sites Inventory are primarily located in the highest and high-resource areas, which is the rest of the city, consistent with AFFH. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, other general plan updates are triggered per state law upon revising one element of the general plan. Because the housing element is being updated, these additional updates are therefore also required. This includes revising the safety element to address climate adaptation planning strategies pursuant to Senate Bill three seventy-nine, among others. Additionally, in response to numerous wildfire emergencies throughout the state, additional requirements were put in place to ensure that the safety element and local emergency response plans and other city requirements properly identify and address the threat of wildfire. The safety element revisions are subject to review by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection in conjunction with CAL FIRE. Exhibit C to the staff report included a memo summarizing the applicable requirements for the safety element, as well as proposed new policies or revisions to existing policies. The proposed policies are primarily revisions to existing safety element policies and reflect ongoing efforts that are already underway in the city. For example, this includes ensuring alignment with updates being made to other city documents that address climate adaptation planning, such as the five-year FEMA Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, or LHMP, which is currently in process of being updated, as well as the update to the city's greenhouse gas reduction plan currently underway. The LHMP will reflect the latest climate change projections and climate change-related risks and must identify how the city is addressing them through a variety of efforts, such as building code requirements and preparation of emergency response plans for utilities. Additionally, proposed policies reflect that the city will continue to ensure that the applicable geotechnical information and reports are available for review for new development projects when applicable, such as in areas with greater risk of liquefaction resulting from earthquakes and completion of a seismic vulnerability risk assessment for the city's water supply recently completed by Burbank Water and Power. In addition to the safety element revisions, the housing element update also triggers a requirement that cities consider environmental justice within their general plan, either as its own standalone element or incorporated throughout elements of the general plan. Per Senate Bill one thousand and the associated California Government Code Section six five three oh two, environmental justice is defined as the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. In other words, the main goal of environmental justice is to prevent the development of environmental policies that unfairly impact communities that are already considered disadvantaged and to ensure that there is equal access to the planning process for all residents, including those that reside within disadvantaged communities. The Governor's Office of Planning and Research recently published guidance information to cities to assist in implementing this requirement. Additionally, the environmental justice revisions are subject to review by the Office of the Attorney General. Per state guidelines, the first step in addressing environmental justice is to identify what areas of the city are considered disadvantaged through the lens of Senate Bill one thousand. Some examples of how disadvantaged communities can be identified include looking at differences between census tracts in terms of their exposure to pollution burden indicators, coupled with demographic factors such as households with lower income levels or excessive housing cost burdens, as well as sensitive populations, such as those areas with higher rates of senior households or incidence of asthma or cardiovascular disease, among other factors. In accordance with the state's guidelines, the city is using the map shown at the right to identify disadvantaged communities. This map was also included in Exhibit C. A map called EnviroScreen, CAL EnviroScreen, is provided through the California Environmental Protection Agency and uses the factors just described, among others, to identify increased exposure to environmental health hazards within the city. Areas that are considered disadvantaged are shown in the dark orange and red areas. Seven census tracts within the central northwest by the airport area and southeast Burbank are considered to be disadvantaged communities based on the CAL EnviroScreen data. Once disadvantaged communities are identified, the city is then required to develop policies throughout the general plan to reach three main goals: reduce health risks in these communities, promote civic engagement, ensuring that there is equal access to the planning process, and prioritizing improvements and programs to occur within disadvantaged communities. There are a number of proposed policies that were included in Exhibit C. The vast majority of the policies proposed reflect revisions to policies that already exist throughout the general plan so that where applicable, these policies can be updated to address the environmental justice component. Noted in this slide are just some of the proposed revised policies, including: minimizing residential displacement, especially in disadvantaged communities, as part of the housing element; utilizing the city's complete streets plan to help evaluate streetscape design for new projects as part of the air quality and climate change and mobility elements; incorporating additional project design features such as fixed windows, open space, trees, and the latest MERV rating air filtration systems, specifically for development in close proximity to the freeway for the air quality and climate change element; seeking to make more information and resources to the public available in Spanish and Armenian in addition to English; considering new non-residential uses in proximity to disadvantaged communities and discouraging generators of high levels of air pollution as part of the land use element; seeking to engage residents in disadvantaged communities that have not historically been engaged in city decision-making as part of the land use and all elements; seeking to provide transportation investments within disadvantaged communities for the mobility element; seeking to implement noise reduction measures for the noise element; and pursuing parks and recreation or open space improvements equitably throughout the city, among other proposed policies. This concludes the overview of the draft updates to the housing element, safety element, and general plan revisions to incorporate environmental justice policies. After tonight's meeting, staff will be providing the documents to the City Council, and they will continue to be available for public review and comment. Following City Council, anticipated for late May, staff would submit a draft of the housing element to HCD for sixty-day review and comment. Additionally, staff and the consultant will continue undertaking the required environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, which will include an environmental impact report. Adoption hearings for the elements would occur in early fall two thousand twenty-one and would culminate with submission to HCD and certification by October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one to ensure a compliant housing element and avoid any enforcement actions by the state. We know we covered a lot of information in this presentation, and staff and the consultant are available for any questions. Thank you.
Did we lose our chair? Yeah, Leonard, yeah, if you can, we're trying to get her back on right now. There she is.
Sorry. Today is just one of those days. Okay, so I dropped off maybe the last minute, but thank you so much, Ms. Frank. It was a very comprehensive and great report. Now, we are at public comments, so we can have folks provide comment on this housing element update. And you may call eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. And your comments are limited to three minutes. And the phone lines are open now, so please bear with us because it may take a couple minutes for the first callers to get through the line.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. There being no public comments, I now declare the public comment period closed. Does the board have any questions of staff or comments in general? Yes, Vice Chair, Hadien.
I have a question about the survey that was done September to December two thousand twenty. I don't see that as a part of Exhibit B, or maybe I do not have it. Where is it? In the documents?
Or, um, board member, Hadien, I'm just pulling it up right now so I can direct you to the specific page. So just bear with me one moment. Okay, so in Appendix F, the last the last one, it's included as part of that section that deals with community participation. There are pages within that section that provide screenshots and responses that were included with the survey.
What is the page number on that?
So B ninety-one, Vice Chair.
B ninety-one.
Starting on B ninety-one. That's Section F, I'm sorry. And the, is it Lisa, the workshop input?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, B one oh five. Board member.
B one oh five.
Yeah, so thanks, thanks, Fred. B one oh five is specifically from the survey. The portions that precede that in Exhibit F are from other parts of the community participation, including the workshops and summaries from those workshops.
And to, how many responded to the survey?
There were about two hundred and twenty-six responses.
Thank you. And do we have a breakdown or any details on the actual survey? We just see the results here. Is there any more details on that? Either online or print?
And just to clarify, in terms of details on the breakdown, would you be able to clarify a little bit what specifically you're looking for?
No, no, the actual survey and the questions are the survey. Do we have that here anywhere, or we just see the results? I think we just have the results.
Yeah, so what's shown here, the survey itself was a very interactive-type survey, so there were a lot of different screens that a participant would engage with as they're navigating through the survey. So I guess if what you're asking is are the screenshots of each survey question shown here, they're not, what's shown here are the responses that were submitted as in response to those questions.
Okay, that would be good to actually see the actual survey. I have one more question. So is, sorry, back to my first question. So is that available anywhere to see actually the votes and the results on each question by each applicant or anyone who took the survey? Is this available?
I believe it is to a degree. The survey respondents were allowed to be anonymous. So they were asked at the end of the survey to provide, if they chose to, to provide demographic information, such as if they were a renter or owner, what type of housing unit they live in, race, ethnicity, age, and household income. So we do have some of that, and I believe I'd have to confirm, but I believe we could go into the, it's called MetLife, is the kind of platform, and see for each respondent what their specific responses were. I would have to confirm that, though.
The, if I may add, the summary of just the characteristics of the survey participants is on the back of page, it's on B one zero six.
Yes, I'm looking at that. I just wanted to see the details of the questions and what the content of the question is for my next question. My next question is about actually the state funding that was explained during the presentation. And what are the state fundings actually for housing that focuses on homeownership in Burbank?
I can start and then Fred or anyone, if you want to add. I don't know that any of the state grants are specifically geared towards homeownership, only because typically what they do is allow the city to undertake its own planning efforts to address its own housing needs in a variety of different ways. And so once those funds are received, for example, funds that could help facilitate updating specific plans, such as in the case of the downtown Golden State projects. If, let's say, those, some of that grant funding could go towards those efforts and the work that's required for those, and then the city through that effort could seek to identify strategies that would address that particular issue.
I remember we discussed that before, and I didn't see anything that actually provides additional information that what is city offering as a part of the funding, state funding is received to assist with homeownership in Burbank. That being said, that's also one of the items that I would like to see as a part of the housing elements that's being put together. And
Fred or Karen, would anything that I may have missed that you want to add?
Sure. Hi, Karen Warner. I'm the consultant that assisted in preparing the element. We did include a new program, Program eleven, Affordable Homeownership. And talked about different mechanisms the city can utilize to help foster homeownership, which is both through zoning, you know, creating a small-lot subdivision ordinance, encouraging construction of what's referred to as missing-middle housing, allowing duet homes, and also looking at mechanisms to provide funding for homeownership assistance, like down payment assistance. So for that, we look at a new source of funds, commercial impact fees, which is a separate program. Also, in the resources section of the document, we have a table that lists current financial resources available for housing, both through the state and the county and various agencies. And there's several resources available to assist in homeownership, such as CAL Home.
Where are these information in this packet that we have?
So the program that I referenced is on page ninety-one.
Which exhibit is that?
It's actually in the body of the document, page 91.
I have three exhibits.
Yeah, Board Member Hadiyan, in Exhibit A.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I was searching through, is starting on page A-87, it talks about the financial resources. And in here includes the, some of the programs, actually all the programs that Karen noted, including Cal Home, which is on page 8-89.
So these are mostly explaining about the alternatives that housing and homeownership will be provided, or making the path easier for housing to be constructed, to be built for middle class. But my question is actually the financial part of it, because when we're talking to project, we're talking about three things included in the project, the scope, budget, and schedule. The report is focused, the report focuses on the schedule and the scope. But the budget and the finance part of it is my question. What financial assistance we have in place right now? And what financial assistance are being offered as part of this housing element for people to purchase property and become homeowner in City of Burbank? That's my question. The exact sources of funding for applicants to purchase property in City of Burbank?
Well, the housing element doesn't actually provide funding. We do, under the Affordable Ownership Program, which I believe the numbering is the same as what I have, which is on page 91 in Exhibit A, talks about funding mechanisms for homeownership assistance. So we've talked both about a new program to impose impact fees on commercial development that would go into an affordable housing fund that could be used to support homeownership. And we've talked about exploring opportunities for employer-assisted housing to assist with homeownership. And Marybel, are you going to add something?
Yes.
I was.
County of Los Angeles has a program that is homeowners' assistance for purchasing a property. City of Burbank participating in that, that program. It is offered by County of Los Angeles. I think that's the lowest level in the hierarchy of federal, state, and county, but I don't think City of Burbank is a member, and I don't know why.
Right. It's because the county's homeownership assistance program is only eligible for non-entitlement jurisdictions, so smaller cities that fall under the umbrella of the county. Burbank is a direct entitlement jurisdiction in the federal HUD program, so it is not eligible to participate in the county homeownership program.
Would you please explain further? Because before that I talked to Housing Department at City of Burbank, they were supposed to start working on it. And right now I'm hearing a different reason that why Burbank is not a member for county funding.
So Ms. Marybel Leyland is attending the meeting, and she has her hand up, so perhaps she can shed some light.
Thank you. Good evening, members of Planning Board. Marybel Leyland with the Housing Authority, Burbank Housing Authority. Be happy, there's a couple of questions being asked. And first and foremost, just wanted to mention that the current funding sources that both the City of Burbank and the Housing Authority currently has are very limited. One of the funding sources that you may be familiar with, if you've been with the City of Burbank for a little bit of time, is through the former redevelopment agency that did provide millions of dollars to the city for providing affordable housing. That entity did go away in 2013. And so now we're dealing with limited funding sources. However, as was mentioned on this evening, and some of the funding sources that we do have, we are continuously monitoring the funding that is through the state of California. In Ms. Frank's presentation, you heard about SB2 funding. That is, one of those funding sources is the permanent local housing allocation grant, that because the City of Burbank has a compliant housing element, the City of Burbank was able to apply to and receive an estimated 2.8 million in the next five years. The City Council has approved a preliminary funding plan for that. We can certainly continue to look at that funding plan. But to the point of the Board members, specifically to current financial programs, there isn't currently any funding available in the City of Burbank for a homeowner assistance program. There were many, many years ago, maybe about 20, 25 years ago, when it was more feasible to provide a homeowner, a down payment assistance program, for example. Maybe the, back then, 20 years ago, you could purchase an affordable unit for much less, maybe a quarter of what it is today. And so there was a program, and that was viable before. Now we are looking at these now future funding sources through the state that come available to see how there could be some sort of a down payment assistance possibly that could be utilized for the community for the future. Then going back to the new goal that was mentioned, as Ms. Morton mentioned, is the new goal for homeownership, understanding from both the Planning Board and the City Council, that that is certainly one of the goals of the community. And I'm happy to expand on anything in particular that I just touched upon, or maybe more specific questions.
Yes, actually, that's my concern. This report is talking about everything that's supporting housing in form of renting, all sorts of vouchers, all sorts of state funding, starting of the state bill for the funding for housing, which ends up to only renting in Burbank. But there is nothing that majorly looks into homeownership for people that are already living in Burbank or have lived here, and their children, next generation, want to purchase anything, and there is nothing for them. And this is not the first housing element. We have, the general plan was approved in 2013, nothing was included. And the updates that coming includes no effort on the assistance for homeownership. I would like to see that. I would like to see residents of Burbank actually have the opportunity, and I want to see that effort to come on behalf of the city, that there is a plan in place. You're saying that, well, 20 years ago, there was such a plan. Why isn't that plan in effect anymore, when our neighboring cities all have that plan? Why shouldn't Burbank have that plan in place?
Chair, maybe I can chime in a little bit. I just, and clearly this is not a cure-all, but Program 11 specifically is the Affordable Homeownership Program. And just noting in here that the approach is multifaceted, because it looks at creating new first-time homeownership opportunities through both the regulatory side, which is updating the zoning regulations to what I think Karen and Lisa have talked to. And on the financial incentive side, it also is looking at ways where we can possibly tap into resources that may facilitate increased affordability based on different housing types. So if we do small lot subdivisions, if we do condominium projects, and we can facilitate additional units to be built at a lower cost, then ultimately that also translates to what the cost that they can be made available to the public for. In addition to that, on Table 1-41, on the financial resource side, it starts the discussion regarding Cal Home and down payment assistance as to assist homeownership. There's also discussion regarding the Local Housing Trust Fund program through HCD, and looking at whether there's potential for matching grant dollars there to assist not just rental, but also ownership housing. And then looking at other components as far as where maybe we could offset the costs for some of the infrastructure through different housing trust funds that can be developed. So it is a program, and I'm not too sure, and Karen and Lisa can correct me, but I believe this program is more either is a new program, or it is an expanded program, where we actually do some of the follow-up that I think was discussed initially in the last housing program, but we just have not gotten to, and that is looking at different product types, different zoning regulations, to allow us to build homeownership as infill development within the city. Since we're pretty much built out for single-family, we have to now look at infill sites to create new opportunities for homeownership.
Thank you. And when you refer to the product, and one of those products for homeownership, as everyone may know, is the type of condominiums in downtown Burbank that is given to people with certain limit of income. Those are not really popular. First of all, it's very tough to be qualified, and it's a lengthy process. And at the end, anyone purchasing those properties will not financially grow. They're not going to have any growth in a few years, because there is a limit on how much more they can sell the property, or what's going to be the sales price within a certain number of years. Those are also things that we need to reconsider. But in general, what I wanted to express is that the housing element, as far as I've seen since 2013 or before, does not support homeownership for people and residents of Burbank. And that there is a lot of statements, there is a lot of notes, but no one can pick up the phone and call city and ask them, what plan is in place for me to become a homeowner? And my parents have lived here for 40, 50 years. There is nothing that helps someone who wants to purchase anything in Burbank, and there is a program that actually supports them financially. That's what I want to share with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hadiyan. Do we have any other Board Member questions or comments? Yes, Board Member Azadi.
I just wanted to just have a brief discussion regarding the ADUs. There's a couple of, a couple of times in the document it talks about affordable, ADUs, low, moderate. And I'm just wondering, what are we considering as a dollar amount? What are we considering low and moderate? And what controls are put in place to control, so that way there are low and moderate? As far as I know, and what I'm seeing, I don't see that, so I'm just curious.
I can look and pull that up, and if Karen or you have that available, please feel free to. I will say, just as we're pulling that up, the affordability, the income thresholds that are associated with affordability levels are set by the state annually, so.
Give me an idea, give me an idea what low, low income is. Was it $1,000?
Sure, I can actually share a slide, if that works, that I have that identifies that.
And it, it's a sliding scale depending on household size. So for a one-bedroom, which is going to be your typical ADU, a low-income affordable rent is $1,676 a month. And so here, what Lisa is showing is both the income threshold and what the affordable rent would be.
And then what incentives and controls are put in place to make that happen?
So.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, I'll start. One of the things that was noted in the draft housing element under the program that dealt with accessory dwelling units. Program 6, which is Exhibit A-98. There, I mean, there's a few approaches that could be taken, but one of the things that was identified there was incentivizing smaller ADUs that are less than 500 square feet by lowering the processing, reducing the processing times. There's a number of studies that document the rents that are offered for ADUs throughout the region. And generally speaking, the smaller ADUs were more likely to be what's called kind of natural affordable housing, where even if there's not an actual deed restriction, which could be an option too, but in the event that there's not an actual deed restriction, they tend to be rented at lower rents just because they're smaller. So that's one strategy.
But from what I understand, the ADUs have to be processed within, is it 30 days, or is it 60 days?
It's 60 days.
It's 60. So there's really no, you're not giving anyone an incentive because it's 60 days. So if you build a 1,200-square-foot ADU or a 300-square-foot ADU, there's no incentive to make it affordable. So I guess, I'm not seeing it, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, when the state handed down this, these ADUs and took away our local control, I'm all for it if you can make an impact. Make a real impact. Deed restrict it and make it $1,000 a month, that really, really helps people. But making an ADU that's $2,500 a month, $3,000 a month, the only ones that are being positively affected are the investors and the developers. And I'm seeing it in my line of work. Every day I see another property come on the market on a really great street in Burbank, where somebody took a 1,300-square-foot house and built a 1,200 ADU behind it, and they're selling it for 1.4 million. And that doesn't help, that didn't help. That didn't help anybody. It's not going to help anybody. So what I'm saying, and the feedback I'm trying to deliver, is if we're gonna, if you want meaningful impact, then do something that is going to help people with the affordability aspect. If you're going to build an ADU, deed restrict it and cap it at whatever, $1,000, $1,200, $1,500. But, but take the developers and the investors out of this game, and then you got my intention, my attention, and the state would have my respect. That's all I'm saying. I think, I think, again, I think the state had put a blanket over all of California. Instead of letting each community make up their own rules that benefits each community, they blanketed the whole state with, with regulation that helps. It's really not helping anybody, except the people I mentioned, the investors and developers. So I just don't see how, you know, doing the permits in 60 days is an incentive to offer low, affordable or moderate income ADUs. But if you do something really impactful and cap it, that's meaningful to me.
Can I just make a comment on capping the rents? We have proposed this in a couple jurisdictions, and the state has said that that is a constraint to the production of ADUs if you're imposing a rent cap. So you really aren't permitted to do that unless you provide it as an alternative option.
I understand. I, believe me, I've been on this ADU bandwagon for three and a half, four years. I understand it. I'm giving you my feedback that I don't think that what they're trying to do is actually helping at least people in the area that I specialize in Burbank. I'm not seeing the ADUs go for $1,000 a month. I don't see, I see them at $3,000 a month. I see them at $2,500 a month. I see purchase prices at 1.4 million, because they just flipped, flipped a property, made it into a duplex. Now, if you buy, if you buy a property for 1.4 million, if you do the math, put 20% down, you can't offer both units for $1,000 or $1,200 or $1,500 a month and be on the upside of that property. So you're not, we've, what the state has done is not really helped, in my opinion, anyone in Burbank anyways. They have not helped. And if you do the analysis and you do the financing on it, it just doesn't make sense. sense. So I think that there's got to be some thought and some input on how do we, if we're going to do this ADU thing, how are we going to do it that's going to benefit people? Maybe you cap the rent for five years, deed restrict it for five years, and then from five years above, you let them, you let it fly and go market value. But I think you've got to do something to really make an impact, or in my opinion, don't do it at all. Because it's jeopardizing our residential neighborhoods. So there should be a trade-off, in my opinion. There should be a trade-off. If you're going to jeopardize the quality of life of our residential neighborhoods, then we should have made a real big impact. And I'm all for that, if you're making an impact, but I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Any other folks, or Board Members? Member Gamboa, did you have anything?
No, I just want to commend the staff for putting together a thorough and good analysis of the housing element and the existing conditions and the problems and the issues that we have with this element. And I think all the other board members brought up some good issues about housing and affordability that's kind of, you know, more about policies that happen on the council level and other levels as opposed to maybe the element, but they're all related, and I think they're all good, good context to think about going forward, especially as the council considers this. I would just note that, that I agree with Board Member Rosati about how these ADUs maybe don't, the affordability doesn't help Burbank specifically, but because it's kind of the state acted as a statewide, as a regional thing, these additional units in Burbank help these other areas that are facing displacement outside of Burbank. Whether or not Burbank cares about Sun Valley or North Hollywood, that's a different story, but there is, there is some knock-on benefit to that at a regional level. But it would be nice to have affordability directly here in Burbank with ADUs that, that are for rent. So if there's a way to do that, I would be, I would very much support that as well.
Thank you, Board Member Gamboa. I just had a few, I just clarifying questions on this, and again, thank you for all the work that has gone into this update. Will this, will this housing element be able to incorporate some of the new data that we're getting for the 2020 census? Because I know most of it's coming up to like 2018, and in California, there seems to have been a significant change. So will we have, will we have it, number one? And do you anticipate much change in Burbank in particular?
Unfortunately, we won't be able to incorporate the 2020 census. Most of the data, other than market data, is based on what's called the American Community Survey, which is a census product, and it's a rolling five-year average. So we use the 2014 to 2018 rolling five-year average. That's what SCAG uses. And if we use that data, and specifically the, what's called pre-approved housing element data from SCAG, HCD automatically buys off on that needs assessment analysis. If we got some 2020 population numbers before this was due, we would certainly flip that in.
Awesome, thank you. And then in terms of talking about ADUs, I know that it's just spread out in multiple areas in the housing element update. There, there is like an exhibit on page, Exhibit A-38, the housing types. Is there any talk of trying to incorporate some of that information in there so that you have it in one area? I mean, it kind of straddles. At what point do we call it multifamily housing? I don't, I don't...
Right, and unfortunately, the reporting through Department of Finance doesn't identify accessory dwelling units as its own, you know, housing type. And I'm fairly certain the 2020 census isn't going to identify it as its own housing type either.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think like with, for some of these concerns that the other board members have brought up, we have to track some of this information more closely and probably in a few years, go back to state and say like, this is not working with certain areas and the law needs to change. But we need to make sure that we track this accurately.
Chair Lou, can I chime in real quick? Just, and I know you guys are probably aware of this, but when we do the annual reports for the general plan and the housing element, we do track the ADUs. And it is in essence, ongoing monitoring, reporting that we do for the housing element. So it, it is going to be tracked as far as how fine-grained that data can get, you know, I mean, some of the things we've talked about is, you know, asking for voluntary survey of ADUs and saying, hey, if you're willing to, you know, provide this information in general, what, what's the rents? I mean, we can, we can try that and see what kind of a response we get through that process and help to, in essence, build up the data. And maybe in the long term, if we were able to get that information, maybe that'll help to provide a better picture of what's occurring in the city, and especially with the production numbers. But I will say this, you know, glass half full with ADUs, is that when you saw it in the housing element, we looked at the total number of housing production units to meet our RENA number, that if we kept on pace with the projected ADUs, that they would actually reduce the amount of additional pressure or housing demand in some of the areas that have to be looked at to basically meet the RENA, the overall RENA number, and also the buffer, the 10 to 15% buffer that we need to account for in case we lose units as sites are developed, and we have to offset those, right? Because we can't go below the number. So just wanted to point that stuff out as well.
Yes, thank you for that. I think I'm more concerned, it's not necessarily the numbers. For me, it's, I'm more concerned about the actual rents and the affordable housing aspect of it. And then speaking of like potential housing numbers, on A-83, you, the housing element identifies potential housing in the future, and I'm just curious, since some of those are business locations, are like the former IKEA, but others are businesses that are currently active. So if for some reason a business goes out of business, would you, or moves, are you, are those areas considered you would want to change it into potential housing?
So I can start, and then I'll let Lisa and Karen further elaborate. These, these sites in particular, when we were looking at them, are one, areas that already have general plan land use density for them that allow for residential, sites that maybe are, have been vacant, or that we've gotten actual direct inquiries that the site is potentially up for sale, and they're looking at what options are. So we've, so it's a combination, like in the case of the YMCA site. So we actually have preliminary discussions with the Y, and they're looking at their properties and the potential to build housing in combination with a Y facility. So if they made it onto this list, that means that we've at least either engaged or we are being engaged by developers, looking at the sites as opportunity sites for housing. So if they got on this list, it was more than just a theoretic exercise, it was actually potential sites being looked at, and we were looking at them through different factors, including proximity to high transit-rich areas, employment centers, as well as what the general plan land use density was, and then factoring all those things in with actual direct inquiries for, for development.
Great, thank you. Any other last questions for board members? Yes, Vice Chair Hadian.
I have a question about transitional and supportive housing on Exhibit A-103. I know that we reviewed the text of this ordinance, which failed, and all the supportive housing was, sorry, emergency shelters were, was approved, but I see that it says ongoing. Was the zone text change approved by city council? This is a question for staff.
The item hasn't been presented to the council yet. So it's written, it's written within the context that it's still to be considered by the council. So they haven't seen the proposed zone text amendment, but they would see it in combination with the motion that was taken by the board and all the input that was provided regarding transitional supportive housing as well as emergency shelters.
Is there any study as a part of this housing element that relates to the areas for transitional and supportive housing, like the studies that have been done for the TOD sites or future development sites? Is there any part of this report that actually looks into opportunity sites for transitional and supportive housing?
The transitional and supportive housing is, is a change to the regulatory requirements that applies to the different zones. So it's somewhat speculative on the number and unit type. It's just like we have zoning throughout the city, and the opportunity sites that I mentioned before were specifically identified because they were within two specific planned areas where we were anticipating the lion's share of housing to be developed pursuant to the city's affordable housing strategy. So it was a different set of analysis that was being done for the opportunity sites as opposed to the transitional supportive housing requirements, or a follow-up program that requires that our zoning regulations be consistent with state housing law related to those two particular types of housing.
Yeah, just to clarify, the opportunity sites are sites that perhaps don't currently support housing. The zoning isn't a residential zone, and it's an opportunity for the city to meet its RENA number by rezoning that or entertaining a development proposal that would bring housing. As Mr. Ramirez mentioned, the transitional and supportive housing is a housing type that the city by statute shall allow in every zone that allows a residential use, subject to the same requirements as whatever residential use is allowed in that zone. So as Mr. Ramirez indicated, the zoning is not currently in alignment, and that's something that needs to be corrected if the city wants a compliant housing element and general plan.
Yes, and that, that's exactly why I asked the question, because I'm thinking ahead of what's after the review by city council, and in case it's not actually approved, then that means we're not going to have any transitional and supportive housing in the R1 area or the zones where we have multifamily and mixed use. So that triggers the questions that we do need transitional and supportive housing. Where are these housing going to be if the text doesn't get approved?
Well, it's currently in the zoning code. So it's in R1 and R1H that it needs to be further incorporated, but just because it doesn't get adopted into the ordinance doesn't mean the city is off the hook. It, it means that there is a vulnerability that will have to be addressed when and if someone brings that housing type to the city. So if the ordinance doesn't get passed, we're just baking a problem into our zoning. That, it doesn't resolve it.
And Joe, just to clarify too, if, if that particular issue isn't addressed, then I anticipate that'll be an issue with HCD when they consider certification or approval of our housing element.
Yes, and, and as I explained last time, that was actually a promise we made eight years ago. So we're trying to deliver, staff is trying to deliver on the last housing element before we try to get the new one approved, because we're hoping HC believes us that we're going to do these programs. And so there's several pieces in play, and that's why the transitional and supportive housing is going to council before the element comes to the planning board and the council for consideration and adoption.
Thank you. Okay, if none of the board members have any questions, I'm happy to entertain a motion to note and file this report.
So moved. Do we need to note and file?
Do you need a motion for this?
Yeah, we just requested it, so I think if you could take a motion...
Okay, no, no, I'll move that.
Go a second.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Board Member Rosati, and seconded by Board Member Gamboa. Can we please have a vote?
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have any other additional reports from city staff, Mr. Ramirez?
We do not, Chair, but one thing that I would request if the chair and the board would be willing to entertain is typically with the meetings, and I know this was unique, but we typically do allow for a public comment on items not on the agenda. And if the, if the chair and the board would entertain that, I, and I verify with our city attorney, but it would be good to probably allow an opportunity if anybody wanted to chime in or was waiting, anticipating that they get a chance to speak on something other than was on the agenda tonight.
Yes, that's my next item for oral communications. So if any persons would like to speak on any item concerning city business, you can go ahead and call 818-238-3335. The comments are limited to three minutes, and the phone lines are open, so if you could bear with us for a few minutes, sometimes it takes that long for the first caller to get through.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close this period of public comments and move on to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes from April 12, 2021. Are there any questions, comments, or can I have a motion?
You can make the motion.
Vice Chair Hadian, Ms. Louz. Can I have a second?
One second.
And Board Member Gamboa seconds. Can I have the vote, please?
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
I'll go ahead and abstain, it wasn't at that meeting.
Motion passes.
Yeah. Thank you. The next item is the introduction of additional agenda items, so if any planning board members would like to introduce new items for discussion, they'll actually be taken tonight, except to place the item on a future agenda. Do any of the board members have any items? Yes, Vice Chair Hadian.
It's not a separate item, it's just a question that I missed. For small lots subdivisions, I didn't see anything in this housing report. I would like to see small lots subdivisions also looked into and addressed as a part of the housing element, or in general, if, if it is possible.
It's, it is actually in the, in the housing element, and we'll, we'll send you that section, ma'am, but it is on, it is a topic, and it's a good point that you're bringing up.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and move to the next agenda item, city planner comments. Do we have any comments, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, I'll make it brief. I think Chair Lou, you were absent the last meeting, but there was some discussion regarding bringing an item where we could have a discussion with the board, so that we could look into data requests that maybe would help provide context or information that maybe would be necessary or helpful to the board in future projects. So one of the things we're going to be doing is putting together, I'll be putting together a memorandum to you, just highlighting the things that we have direct access to, that we can hopefully help to kind of provide a larger context, and hopefully help when necessary to make findings, or when we're looking at different statutory requirements through zone text amendments. So one of the things, we'll be working with city attorney on it, but I just wanted to make sure collectively you all are aware of that, because I think we were trying to get it sooner than later. There's a couple of items coming to you, so as time permits, we'll fit in a memo for discussion purposes, and then work from there. Ultimately, like anything, resource-wise, not only the information, but the staff available to track down a lot of that information is a little limited, but we will do our best within the constraints that exist right now. And hopefully, we are requesting from council some additional assistance through consultants and additional staff to assist on more of the heavy, heavy-laden data information where, you know, we're talking long-range planning, or being proactive with new zoning regulations to address concerns from the community. So we'll see how that goes, but nonetheless, we'll provide a memo in the coming weeks to you all, so we can at least have that discussion. And that way, there's a better understanding as to, you know, information, when it can be made available. And then also have a discussion, maybe in those instances where you may need a clarifying question, and maybe that's something that we can work on a protocol where maybe that information, through an email, if we get that ahead of time, we can try to get that answer, and then distribute the response to that answer to the whole board prior to the meeting, which might help, one, address a concern others may have, or, secondly, facilitate further discussion on an issue, but just by having that information available to you. So we'll be working on that.
Great, thank you. I thought you were going to also announce that city clerks taking applications for boards and commissions too.
Yeah.
Starts today, right?
You're right. There, I believe there's three board member positions that are up again. So I believe Chair, yours is one of them, Vice Chair Hadian, and Board Member Rosati's position. So yes, we'll, I just got that notice today, by the way, myself. So yes, that is available. I mean, we're hoping, like with anything else, that you guys have been a really good team collectively, and we've had a good working relationship. So hopefully, if you're all interested, you'll throw your hat back in the ring, so to speak. But yes, you're right, for the general public, there are opportunities to serve, both within the planning board during this cycle, but then also in the other boards and commissions that are currently have open positions as well. So thank you for bringing that up. I apologize.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no worries. I know the application's open today, and they run through Wednesday, June 2. So you can go to the city clerk website and look at the boards that are, the positions that are available, and the application is there too. And by the way, that new website is great. So, you know, I know they sent it out, but there was no, like, ability to comment, but I was like, this is awesome. So kudos to the team that put that together at the city.
I'll make sure to let them know.
Yeah, great. Thank you. All right, we are at adjournments, so we're now going to adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, May 10, 2021, at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television, and we'll be able to provide public comment again in the following two ways, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, which is www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling in directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. So thank you all for your participation, and have a great evening.